July 8th, 2024, regular city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Clerk Deaton, let the roll call show. Everybody is present, and we'll move on to approval of the minutes for the June 24th city council meeting.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the bills for this evening. Councilmember Moser.
I'd like to move the bills as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda for this evening. Councilmember Dilg.
Thank you. I'd like to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nothing on the consent agenda for this evening. We'll move on to public comment at this point. If you'd like to address the council, there's a two-minute time limit. Please state your name and address for the city clerk. And we'll close public comment at 6:31. Moving on to a discussion of downtown with DDA Director Nate Mack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Just a quick update on the farmer's market. Things have been going pretty well so far this season, despite, you know, some of the, some cancellations for inclement weather for some of the vendors. And the holiday weekend was a pretty good market as well. So Diana said she was happy with the turnout that we had there. So, yeah, as we move forward in, along with the season, I believe every day that we have now for the market has been spoken for. So all the spots are spoken for. So if anybody cancels, then hopefully we'll be able to just fill that with another vendor. So this week, the board, the DDA board will be meeting. The results of the transformation strategy, strategy session will be presented by the facilitator during the meeting. Once we have that report in hand, I'll be able to provide that to council as well so you can take a look at it. The DDA, the DDA board will be voting on, I believe, a mission and vision statement and a few other things as well. So we're looking forward to getting that completed, and that will allow us to continue to move up in the Main Street Oakland County program, as well as hopefully eventually become accredited through the National Main Street program. I think that's it. We've started planning for the holiday spectacular, trying to secure some, well, it's escaping me right now, but carriage rides, there we go, through the downtown for the event. So tried to get them last year, but I was a little late, meaning I reached out in, at the end of July, and they were already booked, so trying to get a little bit ahead of it this year. So hopefully we'll get them. But, yeah, that's it for me. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for DDA Director Nate Mack? Councilmember Bogart?
Thank you. In your notes, you had mentioned that there was some controversy surrounding the announcement of South Lion Pride. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, there were some comments that were counterproductive on the downtown South Lion page. People were going back and forth, kind of bickering amongst each other. And I was monitoring it pretty closely, and at the point when it spiraled into people swearing at each other and throwing out personal attacks, I turned off comments for it. So I think there ended up being about 15 comments. And, yeah, that was my discretion, but I thought it was entirely inappropriate for people to be using that language, so I put a stop to it.
Thank you. And I understand we'll have a police presence at the Pride event, is that correct?
Don't steal this thunder. Councilmember Moser.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about farmer's market. When we have vendors like the Twisted Cork or Witch's Hat Brewery coming in, what is the process for them to, is there like a liquor license that's involved with that?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, and what, can you explain the process for that?
So they, yes, so when they submit an applicant, so it's different with Twisted Cork and the Witch's Hat, only in the sense that Twisted Cork is like a half-season vendor, Witch's Hat is a sponsor who has, I believe, five days at the market.
Okay.
But with the liquor license process, so they submit the application to us, they indicate that they want to sell their product at the market or sample their product. And so then Diana provides them with a spot that they'll be located at, because they have to be in the same spot according to state law for every single market that they're attending. So they'll be in the same spot, because they have to be.
Right.
And then we have the police chief sign off, and Diana sends the map to the vendor, and then the vendor turns around and fills out an application for the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to sell the alcohol or sample alcohol at the farmer's market.
Okay.
And then the MLCC, once they have all the paperwork, whenever they get around to it, basically, they approve the application, and then they're able to set up and do things at the market.
Okay. And typically, how does, how long does that take?
I don't know, because I don't submit the application.
Oh, you don't submit it?
No. The Twisted Cork or Witch's Hat submits that application to the state.
They submit it to the LCC themselves?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. And then I was wondering if we could get the farmer's market website updated. You still have the 2023 sponsorship forum up there?
Okay.
If we get that done. And then I had heard, I, I heard from another vendor that we might be losing a sponsor, that they had sent their check in, and nobody really knows what's happened with it, and now they want their money back. Is there truth to that?
There is one sponsor that we refunded, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Is there a reason why we didn't want them?
There isn't a reason why we didn't want them. It was a misunderstanding, I guess. In order to have their logo on the board, I have to have a copy of that.
Oh, yeah.
A digital copy to send it to the printer, and I never received it. I made three requests for it.
Okay.
I never got it, and then they said, well, it's not up yet. I've lost out on two months of advertising. We just refund me. And instead of getting into a fight, I just said, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Kivell.
That license that you were talking about, is that the same one that Bushes uses when they have tasting inside their grocery store? I mean, is it the same?
It's different. So it's a specific license for farmer's market.
Okay. It is specific to it. Okay. And secondly, do you, do you have any insight on how things are going at the tavern? I mean, are, are they starting to make some headway, or?
So I spoke with the individual who'll be renting it last week, and he said things are going well. They had some documents they had to drop off with us, so, but as far as specific details, I don't know a lot of that, so.
I hope they're continuing to move forward.
Yeah, they are. Definitely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks very much, Nate. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Moving on to the fire chief report with Chief Thorington this evening.
Mayor, council, good evening. We are currently at 589 incidences as of tonight. We have a new hire, Mark Evanson. He's a local, he's established. I'll be sending him through Fire 1 and 2 and EMT in the next several months. We've had a couple of vendors, we've had several vendors come in for the two different projects we've got in this year's budget, the LED replacing the lights in the station, as well as the roof. We're waiting on a couple of the LED vendors to come back with quotes. All the roof ones have come in, but there are several different roof styles. So I'm going with Jeff Archie next week to see and discuss with him what the best options are for that. We've got up to three openings internally in the fire department, fire inspector up to two openings, and one up, up to one sergeant opening. There's four applicants, and we're going through the process of that now. And Enston 711 is still out of service at Cummings with the compressor and transmission sensor issues. We're waiting on parts. So hopefully soon, they really haven't given us an update, other than as soon as they get it, we'll give them service. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Chief Thorington this evening? Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to the police report with Chief Baki this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Councilmember Bogart, to answer your question, yes, we're going to have a presence there at South Lion Pride. President Allison reached out to me, so we are arranging for an officer to be assigned to that detail. We did it last year as well, so, and we're, we planned on accommodating her again this year.
Yeah, it was a great turnout.
Yeah. So we're going to, we will be there, an officer will be assigned to that. Just a couple of other things that I got. We are, we ordered our, our new computers for our patrol cars. This is a Clemis upgrade that we need in order to run all of our computers and our systems inside our cars. We did order them, so they should be on the way hopefully here in a few months. We did schedule an appointment to have our, part of our upgrades is to make, for safety and security, bullet-resistant glass in our FOIA area for our, in our main area for, in the entryway. We also did order our drone, which hopefully will be here in a couple of months. I'm guessing, I was just talking to the salesperson, now we have to go through the training of the drone, and I'm looking at a couple of different options to send at least a minimum of two of our officers to drone pilot school. So hopefully that'll get done as soon as we get the drone there. This is kind of a, it's the same one we're getting as Green Oaks Drone, so it's a very capable drone, has a lot of features on it. We were very impressed with the use of it, so we basically got the same one they got. So made a little drone envy, I guess, I don't know. But it's amazing what these things can do, but we're going to set up training for our officers to start attending these and be able to deploy it here, hopefully, I'm hoping in a couple of months, once we get it. Our admin assistant, Lisa Werner, she had left us. She went over to another job over at Virtual Academy, so I wish her luck for that, another opportunity for her. We do, so we are taking applications for administrative assistant. We already have three. We opened it up to the public, I think it was Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday, and we already have three applications. So a couple more weeks, we're going to start doing our boards for our admin assistant position, so I'm, I'm optimistic we'll be able to get one pretty quick. We also have a couple of cadets that we're looking at doing backgrounds on, to bring them onboard as cadets and possibly cadet recruits, to place them through the academy. I think the next academy in Oakland, I believe, is in a couple of months, so we'll see how they work out. So hopefully they'll work out fine, and they'll want to do, they want to be with us as officers, so that's the plan anyways. And I believe that's all I have, if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Chief. Comments for the chief? Councilmember Dilg.
Thank you. So what are, what's the purpose of the drone? What are you hoping to be able to use it for?
So we don't, we don't have a K-9 unit right now. And I've seen the other departments that we've used their drones, the capability of them. So basically, what we'll be able to do is, these drones right now zoom up to about 180 times. So we're able to look at, look for like missing suspects, individuals that are maybe lost, either children or the elderly. We also can use them as events where we can send them up and kind of have a bird's eye view of what's going on during the event, if there's any things that we need to have concerns with, traffic problems, individuals. So the, it gives us a big bird's eye view of that, that area. I've been involved with a couple of times where we used them, where the capabilities that we had, one drone, it was a few years ago, and the drone that we saw the, I want to say a couple of months ago, they've greatly increased their capabilities. They have spotlights on them now, they're in infrared, so now you can, they have heat signatures where you can actually look at the, in the dark and see them, they light up like a Christmas tree, if you're looking for a suspect, a missing child, whatever. So it just gives us another capability of, in order to, for us for like surveillance or for looking for individuals that are either wanted or in need of help.
That's great.
So, yeah. I was really impressed the last time, the same one that we're getting, I was really impressed the capabilities of this thing, and, and we were able to locate a suspect with it within a couple of minutes, once we put it up.
Awesome.
Which was basically in an embedded wooded area, so, so it was very impressive.
Thank you.
Yep.
The other question I had really quickly is, I keep seeing Lion Township talking about their license plate readers that they are, that they are bragging that they're catching criminals with. So I just wonder if there's anything we could ever do.
We, I looked in the license plate reader, it's like flock cameras. We, we, actually, they, they can contact us as far as if someone catches one of our, they'll, they'll call us. If the license plate reader hits the, the stolen on a South Lion, they'll call us. That's not out of the realm of possibilities, something I was looking at this year, but possibly next year as well in the budget. I think it's around three grand a camera per year. A lot of departments are putting at least one or two in their cities, either, I was thinking maybe either in or out, like maybe 11 Mile Pontiac Trail, or, or 9 Mile coming into city, or, so once they pass you, they read every plate. They're also good for suspect vehicles, if you put a color in there or make. But we've, I'm, I'm still looking at that. There's a couple of departments that I've talked to, some chiefs that have them, and, but right now, we haven't pulled the trigger on it yet, but I'm still looking at pricing and things like that, and it's, they're nice because they're set up with other, where you can basically, a network of flock cameras, you can use everybody else's, and they can use ours in a network, so. But I appreciate you bringing up that. Yes, that was something I was looking at, and very well possible, once they get a good price, could be next budget.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other comments for the chief? Councilmember Kivell.
Are any of the guys on the force, are they gamers?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I think that those guys would be the guys that would be
Right.
Blaming onto that really well.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty sophisticated controls. I mean, I looked at them, like, not for me, I'd probably, building, and then here we go.
Might be crashing the heck out of you.
But, yeah, and that's what we're kind of going geared toward, once we get these newer officers onboard, that obviously they're going to be the ones that are wanting to use it. I know, again, looking at the capabilities, you can just, basically, you can fly it up about 400 feet, just in, in an isolated spot, and go straight up, and you have a camera up there now, and you can view 360 for miles, 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 miles. One, the incident I was talking about, from about 200 feet up, you can read the patch on the officer's arm.
Nice.
So it was that detailed, so they're, the capabilities are pretty amazing. I was pretty impressed, so.
Also, if you got a license plate reader, could we get a license plate reader for trucks that turn in the corner?
It's possible, yes. They would be on there as well, but depending on, you gotta, you gotta catch the license plate. There's also cameras in cars that you can drive down, and they automatically run, in like police cars, and they'll run all the plates in a parking lot, or, you know, wherever you, whenever the officer's driving parked on the side of the road. So the technology is, is coming where it's hooking up this technology and automatically running it into the lean or Secretary of State system. So they're very capable of, you just kind of, you kind of watch and make sure they get the right plate, because sometimes if they're, the information put in lean is not correct or Secretary of State, and you get the wrong plate, you could have a problem. But mostly, they're spot on.
They're really, I mean, a lot of bigger communities are starting to, I mean, like in New York and all that kind of stuff.
Absolutely.
They're going to town.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's, Department of Transportation from Michigan have them on 96, and, I mean, they're up and down all over the place, so.
Well, thank you.
What else?
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now unfinished business, we'll move on to new business, award of the bid for the 2024 roadway preventive maintenance program.
As part of our efforts to make further improvements to city road system, we will now forbid for crack sealing segments of our local roads. This contract is to conduct overband crack fill and asphalt mastic repair within the community. We received two bids and are recommending to hire Wolverine Seal Coating LLC out of Jackson at a cost of $19,400 from account number 203-451-802. I've attached a letter from HRC recommending the award to Wolverine Seal Coating, and also bid tab information. So tonight's possible courses of action are approve or not approve the award of the bid for 2024 roadway, roadway preventive maintenance contract to Wolverine Seal Coating LLC in the amount of $19,400 from account number 203-451-802. This will do approximately three-quarters of a mile to a mile of this crack sealing and overband work. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of bid for 2024 roadway preventive maintenance contract to Wolverine Seal Coating LLC in the amount of $19,400 from account number 203-451-802.
I'll support.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, second from Councilmember Dilg. Is there any discussion regarding this topic? Councilmember Hanson.
I was just curious, as far as the repair work, is there an area that was planned for, is it citywide, or?
The first, this first segment is for Martindale Manor, so that is actually north of 10 Mile, just east, or just, just west of the Eagle Point subdivision that's currently being paved. But if this contract goes well, we expect that we may actually add additional work for additional locations to get it at the potential same price for either further work this year, because we do have more money budgeted for this year, or as far as to extend it into future years.
And this is basically hiring us subcontractors, so the DPW isn't filling, you know, cracks and that sort of thing?
Yeah, this is usually done by separate contractors. It's very specific work, which is cleaning cracks, specific width, filling the cracks, and then doing what's called overbanning, which actually is a little bit wider than the actual crack itself, and what it does, it extends the life of the roadway.
About how many years do you think it'll last as far as the repair work?
Like? It varies. It depends, but I think it extends the life, you know, anywhere from five to 10 years within certain areas, and especially if you do this early enough, and you catch it early enough before the water penetrates deep underneath the pavement, extend it even further.
Thank you.
Any other comments? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kivell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Moving on to discussion of the budget this evening, do we have anything for the finance director? With that, we'll move on to public comment. Again, if you'd like to address the council, and we have a two-minute time limit, please state your name and address for the city clerk. Okay, we'll close public comment at this point, and we'll move on to the manager's report.
A few items I wanted to bring up. Washington Manor, the project is still in a hold pattern as a developer resolves issue with MISTHA. Priority Waste has already started the contract for garbage and recycling a week ago. There have been a few streets that weren't removed on the first or second day, but they were picked up the following day. I've been informed through the ARSOC group that 25% of the trucks that were purchased as part of the agreement from GFL have already been equipped with the new camera system on the truck, so that will continue, and you'll also see, starting the trucks being painted in their, in the yellow color as well. 2024 concerts in the park, we still have several available dates for council members if you want to do the introductions for those particular events. This Friday is the big event that's in the McCady Park section, right by the baseball fields, which will have two bands. The first concert begins, the concert begins at 6:00 PM with a warm-up group, and Phoenix Theory will be on after at 7:00. We'll also have, I believe, five food trucks or beverage trucks at that site also. The road improvement projects do continue, they remove the curb in the sidewalk in the Eagle Point subdivision, and finishing up on pouring the new concrete. We expect that they'll actually start to do some milling, beginning is actually as early as this week. Depending upon how the rain affects us, it may, may be delayed until next week, and the Brookfield project will begin the following week after that. I want to update council regarding the pollinator gardens. I did visit a couple pollinator gardens recently in Plymouth and in Canton that were installed. I'd recommend council members go view those. One is located in Plymouth at the Kiwanis Club Point Park, the other one is in Canton at the Zeebywes Nature Center. Those were installed within the last two years. Specifically, the majority of the pollinator gardens were actually installed within the last six months. You'll see a tremendous amount of growth that are put in there for the annuals. The mix is an annual and perennial mix. The annual is to cover for the first, first year, the perennial will start to be introduced, and then we'll take over the areas. And I think this is exactly what we're looking for, the groups that put those in. I've already had discussions with DPW about doing that, about tilling the fields and how these would be installed, so we're looking at the installation would actually occur this fall. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have tonight.
Anyone have any comments for the city manager? Councilmember Kurtzweil.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad you brought up the pollinator gardens, because Hornell Extension Service, my contact there, I was speaking with her last Sunday, I think, and she was informing me that the University of Pennsylvania is actually on the forefront of pollinator gardens in terms of what they are doing, and how they're designing them, and the plant material they're putting in them. So I hope to be in touch with Penn State, no, University of Pennsylvania, in the next week or so, in, in their program, find out where those gardens are, may take a road trip out to Pennsylvania and take a look at that, too. So, so there's some major universities that are supporting this kind of program, so just wanted to let you know about that.
Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've received numerous complaints from citizens about recyclables being picked up, specifically last week, and this week, I know there's been quite a few people that have contacted the city regarding the issue. Our recycling was not picked up until 6:00 PM today, so I don't know if anything can be done to ensure that they address this issue.
It was supposed to be picked up today, correct?
Yeah, and it did. However, last week, I know my neighborhood, Lexington Place, and Carriage Trace did not have pickups.
Yeah, I know. If you have anybody that contacts you, have them contact the city, because we've been working directly with Priority Waste, addressing the issues, the locations that haven't been picked up, the new drivers, the new locations, the new routes, based upon the deliveries and things like that, are not all perfect.
Yeah.
We think we're working out the details. Obviously, instead of last week, a day late, you had just picked it by 6:00 PM today. That's great, because that's what we're telling people, we still expect to be picked up in a, in a timely manner, so I'm glad they were still picked up today, so.
Thank you.
So Paul, I have a, an email from a resident. He's, he's asking about the retaining wall over by Patriot Concrete. Says, I mean, and we, you and I talked about this previously, you know, they put the foundation in, obviously you got to let it sit, let it cure before they do anything to it. He's saying that they haven't touched it since June 1st. I haven't been over there, I don't know. So I just wonder if you have an update on that. He's also asking if they'll put the, the trail closure dates on the South Lion website regarding that, I guess. I'm not sure if they're on there or not on there, just passing that along.
Well, we advise the residents through the website, as well as the Facebook page and Instagram, that the, there may be times at which the trail would be closed, but due to the fact that they've put in a couple, double barrier there, and they've been so good installing the work, they haven't had to close the trail. The concrete, due to the fact of the depth of it being four-plus feet, and six, six feet wide, and about 100 and some feet long, it does take approximately that many days for it to cure. So the 30 days is not out of the realm as far as what's normal for something like that. But, you know, they are, they are doing this work out of their own park, it's not costing the city any money, and I think they're, they're doing an excellent job, and they've been, they've been on top of it, so we're definitely pleased with the work.
Do we have any kind of a target completion date for the?
No, not right yet, no.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for the city manager? Thanks a lot, Paul. Move on to council comments, and we'll start this evening with Councilmember Kivell.
Well, I don't really have anything substantial to talk about. I'm looking forward to this, this weekend's concert, so that'll be a nice Big Bang thing, so I'm enjoying the idea of that. But save for that, it's just been kind of a slow week, so, so that's about all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Kurtzweil.
I just wanted to, uh, thank the Culture Arts Commission for the tribute boards, um, that have gone up, uh, in memory of Dana Johnson, and if you haven't seen them, please take some time and take a look at them, and look at this incredible life of this incredible individual. Uh, it pretty much covers every aspect of her life, and Culture Arts Commission worked really hard on it, and there will be a PDF available, um, I think they're working on that, uh, this week, to deliver the, um, copies of all those, uh, tribute boards to Craig and, um, to Doug Baki, so, thank you, Culture Arts Commission and DPW for all your hard work on ensuring that this, um, very well-deserved tribute, uh, gets out into the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Moser?
Uh, I don't really have anything, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Dilk?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, echo that, I was really excited when I was walking around, uh, and I noticed, oh, this is for Dana, and then I saw another one, oh, this is for Dana, oh, oh, I get it, it's all for Dana, and it was just really wonderful to see, um, such a tribute, I, I really was pleased with seeing that. Um, and then I just wanted to say, it sounds like a good weekend in South Lion, concert, farmers market, uh, Pride in the Park, I hope to see a lot of people downtown, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bogart?
Thank you. Um, yeah, just, uh, building off of, uh, Lisa's, uh, comments about things going on this weekend, we have, uh, South Lion Pride, which is, it's on Sunday at McCady Park from twelve to four, uh, yours truly will be DJing the event, um, there's gonna be a lot of great booths, activities, and performances. Saturday from ten to three is a youth entrepreneur market, where young entrepreneurs will be selling their wares at the South Lion Big B. And finally, South Lion Live at Pumpkin Fest needs volunteers to work the venue during the event, um, info can be found on their website and on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
All right, just one quick note, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, the clover that I planted in my backyard is coming in really nicely, uh, so I wanted to pass that along and thank, uh, Councilmember Bogart for, uh, giving me a bag of seed, um, it's gonna be less, uh, trouble for me to mow, and definitely great for the pollinators, so, thank you again, councilman.
Well, I'll make up for all those short announcements this evening. Uh, just a couple of items, uh, first, I want to again remind everyone about the Friday concert in the park, that'll be held on the ballfields, it starts at six PM with our guest performer Leah Brooke, and then followed by Phoenix Theory, a great, uh, band that has previously performed at the Christmas in July event last year at Heinrich Engineering. There'll be several food trucks at the event, so you can grab something to eat while you enjoy the music, and remember, we're also having a food drive for Active Faith, so please bring along some non-perishable food items to donate at that event. On Friday, July nineteenth, we will have our first movie in the park, uh, in McCady Park, and there will be bounce houses, games, and crafts for the kids, and Snowy Owl will be there with their shaved ice delicacies. The movie will be The Lorax, pre-movie entertainment starts at six, and the movie begins at dusk. And finally, while we're talking about all the events taking place in McCady Park, I want to recognize and thank the McCauley family for taking the time and effort to perform some repairs and repaint our Little Free Library in McCady Park. The Little Free Library was originally built in August of 2016 by the Friends of the Salem South Lion District Library, and has been providing a variety of free reading material for young and old alike since then. The Friends of the Salem South Lion District Library include about two dozen volunteers and stewards who are part of an extraordinary effort to keep that library maintained and stocked. And last week, one family of those volunteers, the McCauleys, re-tiled the roof and repainted our free Little Library. So thank you, Marcus, Emmy, Clara, and Nora McCauley, and thank you also to all of the volunteers who put in to help, pitch in to help, but, take care of this jewel in our